Meeting of the North Ogden City Council. We appreciate you being here. Welcome especially to our youth council and advisors and family members. Invite everyone to please turn your cell phones off during the meeting or put them on silent. And then we'll begin our meeting this evening as we always do with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. And I'll offer those this evening, first invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we can be gathered here this evening. We're grateful to live in a free country and have a free government. We're thankful that we have a wonderful city to live in and all the great people who live here who make it special. We're grateful for all of our many blessings and we pray that this meeting can be blessed, that we'll be able to have good discussion and be able to make good decisions for our city. We pray that all of our residents can be blessed and that our country can be blessed as well. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a little note about our meetings. We do livestream our meetings. We have a camera here above the door that livestreams our meetings on YouTube. So if anyone would like to go see it later, it'll be on YouTube as well. So just keep that in mind. And please remember, myself, council staff, everyone speak clearly into the microphones. We get some notes sometimes from our listening audience that things are not clear if we don't speak into the microphone. So just a little reminder there, we've got two items on the consent agenda up first, the minutes of the March 28th meeting and the April 11th meeting. Is there any discussion on these minutes, council? Councilman Sadithewait.
Just one note on the April 11th meeting on page four. The statements made, we're talking about the depreciation subject and it says failed water meters. And what it really should say is failed water meter radios. It's not so subtle a difference. So if we just make that one change, then I'm ready to approve both sets of minutes.
Okay, any other items? And city recorder, is that something we can just make a change? Okay, in the motion. Okay, is there any more discussion or a motion?
So a motion to approve the minutes of both sets of minutes that are on the agenda with the one note that on the April 11th meeting, the words failed water meters be replaced with failed water meter radios.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve these two sets of minutes with one change. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you then. Those minutes are approved. We'll move now to our active agenda. First up, as always, is public comment period. If there's anything, ladies or gentlemen, you'd like to share with the city council, we invite you forward at this time to share your thoughts. We just asked you to please give your name and address at the start of your comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll have another time at the end of the meeting if there's anything that comes up between now and then. We'll move next to our most exciting item of the night. We have a new North Ogden City Youth Council to be sworn in tonight. Got some of our young people here in the audience. We're happy to have you here in dresses and suits and ties. So we've got a fantastic youth city council program here in North Ogden, have for many years. And the youth city council does all kinds of service projects in our city. They represent the city at youth city council competitions and have done very well the last few years, have really made us proud. And it's just a great group of young people that are pulled from the different schools here in North Ogden or Weber High in Pleasant View in the neighboring cities. So our junior high and high school students are on the youth city council. They go through an application process. Our advisor is Tiffany Turner and has been for two years now, two full years Tiffany? Okay, and has been doing an incredible job. We appreciate all the time she puts in. And we have some new officers that we'd like to introduce. Maybe Tiffany, do you want to introduce our new officers for the year? I think that'd be wonderful if you could. So we'll invite Tiffany Turner, our youth city council advisor, to come and introduce the new officers for the year. And then as you're introduced, if you'll please come up and our city recorder Annette Spindlove will give the oath of office once we've got the whole group up here. You're going to do just one group Annette for the...
Yes.
Okay, so as Tiffany introduces you, if you'll just come on up and then we'll have everyone up here and we'll do the oath of office.
Okay. I don't need to say my name and address, do I?
No, it's okay.
All right. So our new mayor for the 2017-2018 year will be Calder Davis. We have our mayor pro tempore will be Josh Turner. Our recorder is Morgan Reed. We're doing something new this year. Instead of just having reps without like official titles, we have official titles. So this year, our service project coordinator will be Richie Armandez. Our public relations specialist is Naomi Elmer and unfortunately, she can't be here tonight. She's in a big tournament for lacrosse tonight. Our fundraising specialist is Casey Wheeler. And our photo historians are Hayden Simmons and Hope Elmer and she can't be here either tonight. So that's it. Aren't they wonderful? Great group of kids. And can I just have the other youth council people stand up who came tonight? We're kind of low on numbers. It's hard when you get to the end of the school year. Yay, you can stand up, yeah. And we had a couple out in the hall. I don't know what they're doing, but anyway, we're grateful for them coming.
Okay, so let's have our city recorder, Annette Spindlove, will give the oath of office to our new youth city council officers.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Utah...
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
...and that I will discharge...
That I will discharge...
...the duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
...with fidelity.
With fidelity.
Okay, wonderful. Well, let's give just a second. If there's any parents or anyone who'd like to take a picture while we have all of you up here, just give a minute for that.
Parents and grandparents are here, by the way.
Okay, now youth city council, we'd like you, if you could, just, we want to congratulate you, just shake hands with everyone here on the city council and...
Congratulations.
Raise a lot of money.
That's all right.
Actually, you're also the chief bottle washer.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you for serving us.
Congratulations.
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 Good call, man.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, so we look forward, they'll be working already on some stuff this summer and then a lot of things over the next year. And we thank you for coming tonight. I'm not sure Tiffany, do you have another meeting you're all are going to be going to? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to stay here for just a couple minutes so they can kind of get a feel for it.
Okay. Okay, great.
I just want everybody to know, that's my wife. She married well.
Well, in the past. Strike that, reverse it, I think is probably in order. Okay, council, any of you'd like to share about youth city council or any comments on this item?
I've had the opportunity to go to a number of different events with the youth city council and they are awesome to an individual. They're fun to be around, they're level-headed when they need to be, and they're fun when they can be. And I really enjoy being around them at these city, youth city council events. They're great.
And we've known these kids would be just the cream of the crop kids. I'm sure the new group will be measured up to that. And we're glad you're learning about state government and the constitution of both our state and the United States. Very important.
We look forward to all the awesome things you all will be doing over the next year. So thank you for everything you do for our city. Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is a discussion about accessory dwelling units. This item has been going on for a long time. The council's deliberated on this item repeatedly and we'll invite our city planner, Rob Scott, to bring everyone up to speed on what's being considered here and what the status of the item is now.
Thank you very much, Mayor, city council, members of the audience. This particular item, as the mayor mentioned, has come back on a number of occasions in order to provide additional information for the city council and your concerns. I have prepared in conjunction with John, three ordinances for your consideration tonight. I think attachment A is the one that has the overall ordinance that includes both the attached and detached option. And then...
Actually, A does not have the detached, it struck through.
I know.
It includes both.
A includes both. B, you have a final that includes just, I can't remember what it is now. One of them has both attached and detached, one of them only has attached. So I've got a final ordinance for you for whichever one you decide to go with. So item, or the attachment A is the one that includes both options, just to make sure that you have a comparison. So I don't know if you want me to give you another summary like I did last time or if you'd like to just go straight to, seems like we were down to whether or not we're gonna, there seemed to be support for the idea of accessory dwelling units. The question was whether or not we're going to have simply attached accessory dwelling units or attached and detached. So I'd be happy to provide additional information if you want.
Councilman Swanson?
I just want clarification, I'm looking at the exhibits here and exhibit A has all references to the detached, detached ADU struck through and it's exhibit B that has the detached remaining as part of the deal. Just so that as we're talking about it, at least that's what I have here in front of me.
Okay, just so we know which one we're referencing to.
We don't vote on one thinking it's the other.
Okay, good point. So other questions or comments for Rob, council, any questions? So just for general information, this ordinance would allow accessory dwelling units, which is kind of a fancy name for an additional apartment or another dwelling on the property in a single-family home in the residential city center zone, which is just north of where we are here, kind of this area of the city. And it's been something the council's going back and forth on if we'll allow detached units, which could be another structure or accessory dwelling units that are part of the house, more similar to an apartment or a mother-in-law apartment type situation.
Makes a great summary, Mayor.
So if there's no questions for Rob, thank you, Rob. We may have some. Council, it's to you for discussion. Councilman Turner and then Councilman Swanson.
Just, I wasn't here at the last council meeting when this came forward and it was a two-two vote on the, and the mayor was the deciding vote on there. And I was fine with the, I'm fine with detached. I just want to clarify that, I am fine with that, but I'm also kind of, someone make a motion and I'll vote.
Councilman Swanson?
I would move that we approve exhibit A, ordinance 2017 dash... Annette?
Ten.
Ten. Allowing ADUs attached only, not the detached. And would like to expand that allowance to all zones.
Is there a second for that?
Okay, I'll remove the all zones ADU. RCC only.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this ordinance for accessory dwelling units for attached only in the RCC. Is there a second? Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second.
Seeing none, I make a motion that we go with the ordinance that has the B letter attached to it that allows for both attached and detached. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the accessory dwelling units ordinance variation B, which includes attached accessory dwelling units and detached accessory dwelling units in the residential city center zone. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just throw it out there. I mean, we've discussed this at some length in a prior meeting, but for the benefit of those that are not of the context of the prior meeting, my support for both is because I really want to uphold property rights, the owner, an owner's right to use his property. There are a number of stipulations that the ordinance requires, including that the owner must occupy one of the units and that there's a certain property size where it's large enough that it could accommodate more than one unit. And then they need to be, I don't remember our words, similar looking, they need to fit together. So with those provisions and my review of some example units elsewhere, both of the ones I looked at were in Ogden, they were very well done and they fit together and so that's why I'll support that motion.
Councilman Swanson?
It raises in my mind the question of do we go back then and allow duplexes? Because in my mind, there's no difference between a well-made duplex, the new one that's there on 2600, and a home that builds a nice-looking ADU that's detached in the back. It's essentially a detached duplex. And I think if we're looking at property rights and saying that a homeowner has the right to build a detached accessory dwelling unit behind their home, then they ought to have the right to build a nice-looking duplex as well. And we ought to go back and revisit that and eliminate that moratorium based on what I see as the logic behind having a detached, there's no difference.
Well, so the difference would be one that has to be owner occupied and there are some...
And if we have that stipulation on duplexes, if I have a half acre lot in the RCC and I decide I want to tear the old home down and build a duplex, live in one and rent the other out, that's no different in my mind than having a home and a detached ADU behind.
I agree.
And is that the direction we want to go, is to revisit the duplex ordinance moratorium that we put on?
Councilman Urie?
My feeling at the time we put a moratorium on duplexes was that what we were trying to do is keep the homes, the existing homes from being turned into duplexes. I didn't know that we were trying to curtail duplexes being built, new duplexes being built, but I understand Councilman Swanson's point of view.
I'll make a rare comment. I voted on this last week actually because there was a tie. We had one councilman missing and I voted against this because of the detached. I personally don't agree with the detached units for a lot of the same reasons Councilman Swanson said, but I also understand the rationale. I think it's been very limited in its application here. So, you know, I'm not personally in favor of it, but I do think the provisions that have been put in are wise, that there's not a lot of properties this could be done at and that may be one difference for the versus a duplex. But I look at the RCC zone and, you know, it's one of the oldest areas of the city. It's a beautiful area of the city, but I am concerned that more and more duplexes are going to take the character of that neighborhood in a direction that I don't think's healthy for the people who live there. So that's where I personally was in favor of the duplex, taking that away earlier this year. I personally am not in favor of the detached, but I think that the number of places it could be done has been very limited by this ordinance and there's a lot of wisdom in that. Other comments on this one? Councilwoman Stoker?
I agree with Phil. We went through all this on putting the moratorium on that was to stop duplexes in the city center and so I can see the rationale of the detached, but I also am not real comfortable with them, so I would like to see it as is, the attached and not the detached.
Okay, other discussion? All right, moment of truth then. If there's no further discussion, we'll...
Clarify what we're voting for.
So to resummarize, this motion is to approve version B of this ordinance, which will allow accessory dwelling units attached and detached in the residential city center Any further discussion? Okay, we'll start the voting with Councilwoman Stoker?
No.
Councilman Sadithewait?
Yes.
Councilman Urie?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
No.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Okay, then that motion passes three to two. And it's a great example of how democracy works in America. We discuss and debate the issue and then a vote's taken and we all still love each other even if we haven't agreed on it. Councilman Swanson?
That last part might be going too. I would, given the similarity between a detached ADU and a duplex, then I request that in a upcoming meeting, in the next two or three meetings, that we revisit the ordinance that we passed eliminating duplexes based on the same rationale that it is, it's property rights. I think if we had that vote tonight, that it would be a three-two in favor of allowing duplexes based on the property rights rationale. And I think in fairness to those property owners who would like to build a nice-looking duplex, if we're going to allow detached ADUs, then we ought to be allowing duplexes as well. I don't like either. I don't like the detached, I don't like the duplexes, but based on the rationale that this passed tonight, I think we need to revisit and be fair to those property owners.
I agree with Councilman Swanson.
Councilman Turner?
Clarification, duplexes attached, they're attached to each other, they're not detached.
Right, but they're separate dwelling units.
Correct. And if you have an ADU, they're still separate dwelling units. This resident, owner lives in the upstairs and the renter lives in the basement.
Right, but there's no door between them.
Oh, no, there definitely could be doors between them.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, we'll have a discussion about that in the near future as well, as requested.
Well, and the scope of that is maybe bigger yet because you're suggesting we look at the whole city and we were just looking at RCC. I think we need to look at it as the whole city and take into consideration the kind of provisions we were going to require if we allow.
Well, I think initially our discussion ought to be just limited to the RCC zone where we are allowing detached ADUs and take a look at it from that perspective. And I think in that zone where we are allowing detached ADUs, we ought to also allow duplexes if, you know, if they meet the same standards. They look nice, you know, setbacks, everything else is, all the things that we have in place for a detached ADU, we ought to be allowing duplexes under the same conditions.
As a detached, the same conditions we require for a detached.
Which would mean... Well, I think, I don't think we can limit it to that. I think if somebody buys one of those old homes on a half acre there and wants to tear it down as the, and build a duplex like the one that went in here on 2600, on the grounds that we've used to approve a detached ADU, I don't know how that we can deny them.
And the grounds, the main sticking point to the, in my mind, is part of that needs to be owner occupied.
Absolutely. And as long as they meet the same conditions, owner occupied, the appropriate building materials and things, they've met all the same conditions as the detached ADU and I think they ought to have that right.
I agree with you.
If we're saying that a detached ADU is a right, then the duplex is also a right in my mind. And we start with the RCC zone and at least give it the green light there because of the detached ADU and then we can look at ADUs in general and duplexes throughout the rest of the city.
I agree.
Okay, any further after discussion on this item?
Well, if Rob could bring that back in about November, then we could put the vote off till January and Lynn and I won't have to vote.
Just to clarify, for me, this was the most exciting item on the agenda.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, we'll go on to item number four. This is pretty exciting and thank you, youth council. We know you have another meeting as well. We'd like to invite up Mark Brown from our, the chairman of our North Ogden Parks Trail and Open Land Committee to talk to us about geocaching. So, Mark, welcome.
Did I get missed here? He said...
He just wanted to make sure you got the most expensive one.
What you have in front of you is a geocoin. And if you look very carefully on there, you'll notice that each one of them have an individual number. Geocaching started in 2001 in the great northwest as a, as a way of people using technology to play a high-tech hide-and-go-seek game. Right now, there are over five million geocaches hidden worldwide. No, there's 2.5 million geocaches hidden worldwide and over five million people involved in this sport. What I'm coming tonight to do is to ask the city council to approve the disposition of $750 worth of funding to buy a geocoin specifically designed for North Ogden City, which we would sell and use for a fundraiser to help us in our programming for the North Ogden Parks Trails and Open Lands. The cost of the coins is about seven, is $7.50, that's the minting, the die, and also the tracking number. And then the cost, if, Annette, could you pull that up just a little bit? That staff report? The coin that we have proposed is that coin that has on one side the city logo, which underneath would have a space for the, for the tracking number. And then the other side would be the Cherry Days logo that we would use. The coins would sell for $15 and I've gone and talked to several other people in, around the state and they sell them usually for $15. Not this last Cherry Days, but the Cherry Days before and the one before that. We've had geocaching events and we've had as many as 50 people from northern Utah come to our event at Cherry Days. Any questions from the council?
So just to clarify real quick, so the $750 would be used to buy the initial coins that would then basically...
Then we would reimburse the city, the seven, then we would have, once we sold the coins at that price of $15, then we would pay the city back for that and then we'd have $750 in seed money for...
The next round of coins, okay.
If we chose to do the coins again.
And so people would purchase these and then they would hide them somewhere in the city, right? And put the coordinates...
Yes, we've sent coins from here in North Ogden that have ended up in Germany and Scotland. We've had some go as far as way as Czechoslovakia.
Okay. Yeah, and I have done geocaching, not myself, but when I've been on army missions to Japan, I had a colleague who every mission, he would do a geocache and drag us somewhere all over the city to find one of these and he did it every year we went, so. Those who love it, definitely love it and do it all over the world when they get the chance.
We didn't actually pay you to do that, did we?
The army did, but not North Ogden.
We paid you. My tax dollars went to you geocaching.
Yes.
When the city, when we did it before...
When the, when the city, when we did it before, a couple of years ago, how did you do it then? Because we didn't put any money up then.
No, we, we've never had a geocoin for North Ogden.
Yeah, right, so you just used existing geoco-
We did not, we set caches in North Ogden. Within 10 miles of the radius of where we're at, there's over 1,000 caches.
And so, when you did geocaching for the, for the Cherry Days?
Right.
You, you just-
We set out, the first year, we set out a multi-cash, which went to every, went to four of the parks in North Ogden. We started at Lowman View, and we went over to Barker, we ended up at North Ogden. And then, well, we, we also went to Green Acres that year, and then last year, we just, we had, had an event, well, two years ago, we had an event where we just invited people to come and just sign the log.
So, these would be coins that the city purchases that you sell for people to take, whatever.
Yes, and, and if they're-
So, so it's not for an event necessarily here, it's for them to have-
No, but Cherry Days, it would give advertising to Cherry Days in the future. What we're looking at doing is in September, is having an event at one of the local parks where we would do a cleanup, a cash, cash-in, trash-out type of event, and I've already had people, you know, I mentioned it at an event, and they says, "Hey, are you gonna do something this year, because you didn't do anything last year?" And I says, "Well, we're looking at doing a cash and trash-out," so a service project, basically.
And then these coins would be taken by someone to another country and put in another cache, and then people would take pictures of them when they find them, and that's-
Or trade them.
What happens, or trade them.
And then, this would also be a collector coin. You've, some of those coins, those are coins that I personally have collected, that, that will not go out in a cache.
These are not ours to keep, okay, just to clarify.
No, 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 no. Not to be rude, council, but no. Some of them have-
Get a coin.
Well, I'll get you one. But the thing about it is, is that we would, people would, most people will buy one to send out and buy one to keep in their collection.
So, how does this actually work? And that's maybe three questions.
Can you blow that up a little bit, so we can see the sides?
One question is, you said, "And we would pay the city back." Who's "we"?
North Ogden Parks Trails and Open Lands. This would be, would be our responsibility to sell them through the city rec offices. We would put that out on the web, on geocaching.com, and then also, we would make it well-known in the, the city newspaper under Parks and Recreation as well.
And so, question number two, I, I want to participate, and you've got an event in, let's just say in September. How will that actually work out for me? Do I, do I sign up? Do I give you money upfront? Do I find the coin when I get out there?
Okay. What I gave, Councilman Sathwaite was, I'm sorry, I knocked over your nameplate, I apologize. What happens is, people will go on geocaching.com, it will be posted on there, our event, and what you see in front of you, Councilman Sathwaite, is what a, what it would post as. We would, we would call it in North Ogden, geocoin presentation, or whatever, whatever name we decide to call it, and at which time, they would, people would, you know, log in. It would be posted on geocaching.com, and that's usually the, the best way to get it, and we could also put it in the city newsletter, on the city website, and allow, you know, people to see that. That's just one of the, one of the many caches that are in this area. Here's, here's a map.
So, when do, when do I give you my money?
The money would be at the event. You don't have to pay for it ahead of time. You just would pay for it at the event.
That's where they get the cash.
I got my, my spilling on next to it.
That's a question I have, Mark. Why, why wouldn't we not pre-sell something like this and say-
Well, we could.
Buy your coin, and once we get 100, 100 people signed up, we'll go order the coins.
But they still gotta, they have to earn it by finding the cash.
No, they would buy the coin at, at an event. That's usually where it takes place.
Yeah, but I'm saying, why don't, why don't you pre-sell those and say-
Because they wanna see them. They wanna see an actual coin and, and-
It could take a while to get to 100 too, and-
We're thinking probably within six months.
You buy them in a larger amount, so if, if the first 25 took six months, you know, we wouldn't wanna buy 25, 'cause then they're probably, I don't know, $12 each.
Well, when's our payback?
Your payback would probably be within a year, I'm guessing, based on what I, what I've been told by others that have had, had events. It's a year's time.
Swanson?
One, one of the fun things about these geocoins is that when you go onto geocaching.com, and you type in the number that's on the side, the unique identifier, it will pull up a map and show you all the caches that it's traveled to around the world. So, the idea is, I buy two of these coins, one I keep in my collection like this, the other one, I go to a cache, I take a, I take a coin or some other trinket that's in there, take a picture of everything, and then I leave a coin, and then somebody else comes and takes that coin to some other place. There's one in the bottoms of Grand Canyon that's like a six-day grueling journey to get to. It's quite renowned, because it's so hard to get to, but when you log on, you see, you can see that this coin that I started, I'm tracking it now, and you can see it go to Japan, 'cause somebody takes off and goes, and does two weeks with the military, and then it's at a cache in Japan, and somebody there takes it to China, and then it ends up in Pakistan, and it goes all over the world, and you can just track this thing and see where-
How do you know where that is? I got something in-
It's right on the side.
Well, on some of them, they're on the side, and on some of them, they're on the bottom.
And the geocachers, they go online, and they, and they say, "Okay, I've picked up this identifier for this coin, and this is where I got it," and then it shows up somewhere else. It's awesome.
One of the coins, one of the coins that you have there was sent from here, asking to go to a National Scout Jamboree, and I was able to pick it up at the jamboree. It had traveled through 25 different states in two years.
Cool. This says on geocaching.com, says there's 2,554 geocaches near Ogden. I had no idea there's that much cash laying around out there.
Yeah. They're in normal places, under a bench-
Actually-
Hanging from a, a utility box, or a stoplight apparatus, or a sign magnetically connected.
How's this different than Pokemon, whatever it was?
Is there an app for that?
Is there an app? Yes, geocaching.com, geocaching.
That's awesome.
But it doesn't show you where the caches are. You gotta use your GPS to find those.
Use your GPS, and sometimes, actually, what's fun is some days, when a new cache is put out, there's one over by Lowman View Park in one of the posts there, and driving by, there were two gentlemen that had their GPS units, and they were kind of doing this. And I, I pulled over, and I says, "What you doing?" "Oh, nothing." And I says, "You're looking for the geocache hidden here?" And they go, "Uh, yes." And I says, "You're about five feet off to the northwest." "Okay, thank you." And sometimes you get pulled over by the police, and you end up explaining what geocaching is, and they go, "Oh." And at one time, there was one in the trellis back here behind, behind the city offices, and I was looking for it, and out came a policeman. He goes, "You're looking in the wrong place. You're looking on the wrong side." So, yes, it's, it's a well-known sport.
So, are policemen or geocachers?
Uh, I don't know.
Probably handled enough suspicious calls that they know some of the places.
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Kevin, come in here.
So, so this is discussion and interaction, so is this to a-
It is, I'm asking for the approval of $750 to order the coin.
To spend the money, $750 for this geocaching.
And then if, if we get approval, we would plan the, the ordering of the coins, giving us enough time, and also planning an event in North Ogden.
What timeframe do you need?
They said about two months, so-
The only reason I'm asking, 'cause this is the first time we've heard it.
Yeah, and we can bring it back.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, we can go into October, November timeframe to do a geocache. It, it doesn't matter, the timeframe. We just wanted to put this out in front of the city council, and if it, if this goes well, we want to continue this and maybe do, you know, another coin for the city. Utah, Utah Division of Tourism has 149 caches, five in each county, and the coin that has, is the You Travelled Utah, is the prize for doing at least 10 of the counties in the state, and if you get all 29 counties, you get a, a jacket. And I didn't know there were, you know, where some of those counties even were.
You're not gonna come back for us and ask for some money for jackets or something?
No, 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 no.
See, I'm having a hard time visualizing why I would do this. I'm, I'm not-
No, it's, it's okay.
I might play basketball, or softball, or something, but I can't, I'm sure there are people that wanna do this, but I'm having a hard time visualizing that.
It's actually quite fun to-
Actually-
Pick your GPS and try to find these things, 'cause especially when you're driving in your car.
No, no. No, no.
'Cause none of them are on roads.
Councilman Yuri? It's one event that you could do with your grandchildren, and it's a, you know, 80 to eight, and some of you may know Merrill Slater. He just passed away recently. He would take his grandchildren with him, and it became a family event, and we're looking for, to increase the usage of our parks and things like this, and have, get people out and get them involved and active, and this would be one of the things. We also just recently asked for an easy ramp grant to put some geocaches in the parks as well, some, some more permanent ones.
I'm having a, I'm still having a hard time. You, you haven't sold me on this grandkid thing yet.
I tell you what.
I got, I got soccer games, piano recitals, and, and corral things, and now you want me to do something else with them. I'm not gonna have any time to do yard work now.
Do you really want to do yard work, Councilman?
And then Councilman Swanson, or Councilman Sathwaite after Turner.
So, here's just a couple of my questions. $750, which I'm not, I'm not getting, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just not sure if that's, you know, good money to spend, and I know that the police, they make coins. They have their, they have their coins. I would like to know, you know, where you got this, this $750, and, and maybe see if we can get a better price, or so, you know, you know what I mean? I just-
It's the same committee that does the, the police coins.
So, I, you know, I don't know that, and it'd be nice to see what the-
We can break that down for you.
Yeah, I would like to see something like that, and then, is this design sufficient? Are we gonna have to pay for design fees that are better than that? I, I mean, those are things that I just don't know.
You'll have to pay a design fee.
You know.
We can get you a breakdown on the cost.
So, it'd be just kinda nice to have that a little bit, and, and, and Mark, I'm not, I'm, I don't geocache. I know people that do. You'd mentioned it when I was on the Parks Trails with you, you'd mentioned it, you did some geocaching then, and, and I think that's when we started doing some geocaching at Cherry Days, while I was on that committee, and, so I'm not opposed to it. I'm, I'm just not, tonight.
Well, and I appreciate the questions, I really do, and-
I'm not opposed to it either, Mark. I just-
You just enjoy giving me a bad time.
That's been for a lot of years, too.
Yes, it has been.
You and me, sometimes.
So, I, I think, you know, I think I have, I'd like to have a little more detail and bring it back, Mayor.
Okay, so may, may I ask a question of the council then? What questions would you, you know, if, if you could list those, and then I could come back and present them at a later time?
Okay, Councilwoman Stoker, and then Councilman Swanson.
I think it's a great idea. $750 is still compared to what we usually pass on with money and budget. And there's, I mean, not everybody takes piano, not everybody plays soccer, and geocaching's another way to get out and see the parks and fresh air.
You're right.
I think it's a great idea.
Councilman Swanson?
Mr. Sherrill, you stole the words right out of my mouth. I think it's silly that we're gonna bring this back for another discussion for $750, when they're gonna be paying us back.
Yeah, I don't understand the rationale.
If it were me, I would, in fact, it's, it is me, so I'm gonna say, I, I move that we approve the $750 and get this thing going.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve it on this spot. Councilman Sathwaite had his hand up before this motion.
I was gonna say, and you, and, and you said part of what I was gonna say. It, it's an investment, and it, and I think we'll get the money back. It's not a lot of money, and I think we ought to combine it with some other city activities so as to bring more, I mean, do it, do it with the chalk art, do it with Cherry Days, do it with internet.
And that's, that's a possibility. We wanted to kick it off as, you know, with this event. Unfortunately, I, we would have done it during Cherry Days, but I'm gonna be out of the country.
Geocaching somewhere else.
Where's your?
Actually, I'm going to Italy, Switzerland, and France, so.
You have geocaches there, too?
Don't tell, don't tell my wife, but yes, I've got about 50 of them I'm planning on.
She's online right now, watching the live broadcast.
I hope she's not. She doesn't know I'm here. So, but, you know, we would, we would gladly take it to those other events and, you know, have a booth, do it again at Cherry Days next year, so that, you know, we could make this an ongoing thing, because if, you know, like you said, the soccer, grandpa sits there and falls asleep, and while the kids are running up and down the field, but this is something that grandpa and grandchildren can go do together, instead of grandpa just sitting there and falling asleep.
So, years, years ago, before, before we did geocaching, I had responsibility for some young men, and because they were going every which way, we had divided them into two groups, and, and GPS has only been out two or three years, and we were pretty excited about it. So, we took one, the first group up, 'cause they could go on Wednesday night, and the second group was Thursday night. So, the first group went up Waterfall Canyon, hit a box of candy, and the second group was supposed to go up and, and find it, and it was pretty hard. They couldn't, actually, they didn't find it, because when you have these steep walls in a canyon, and you don't get enough satellites to get triangulation, that has changed now, because the whole Glonass system, there's 24 more satellites, and there's a lot of receivers that'll connect to both systems, so now you can double your, the number of satellites, and much more accurate.
This is the kinda thing Lynn really gets on, fun. He, he likes to try and find these geocache things with his, his little, what do you call them?
Drone.
Drone, yeah, with his drone.
I'm gonna go look for the candy, huh?
Actually, on geocaches, they don't let you put food out, because of the animals.
So, so I, you know, I, is this gonna, I think we ought to do, if we're gonna spend this money, we ought to make it something that brings people to North Ogden.
Well, the event would, because we wouldn't, we would, we would also post a list of all the geocaches, so that when they came in to purchase a coin, you know, if they didn't come to the event, that we would have a list of maybe some of the major geocaches in the area. Most of the time, the kids now are using their phones. I just have a regular old GPS that I've had for a number of years, but most of the kids can have it on their phone.
How many do you estimate in, in this area, North Ogden, Ogden, Pleasant View would, would participate in something like that?
Would participate? I would say probably, just, just the swag, the last event that we had was, that I went to, was New, was the New Year's Eve, well, New Year's Day, New Year's Eve timeframe for this year, and we had probably 75 people from, and that was in South Ogden. So, we had people as far away as from Logan, and it was cold, so they came because they wanted to, you know, find geocoins and find the cache that was hidden for that particular event.
Well, you've done this quite a bit. What's the typical turnout for one of these?
Typical turnout is usually about 50 to 60 people for an event, but for a geocache, depending on how hard it is, you'll notice on that one sheet there that gives a geocache, it's rating from one being easy to a five being very hard in terrain, one that you can get to on a wheelchair, or five where you need technical equipment. This would be a 1.5, or, and a 1.5 terrain type of activity, so we'd probably get quite a few. Depending on the difficulty and things like that, there's one in Ogden that only five people have found so far, and it's a puzzle cache.
Who, who does the original hides, hiding of these things?
Anybody. I've hidden 10 here in North Ogden myself.
So, did Phil's motion get a second?
Yes.
Yes. So, we have a motion and a second to approve this essentially loan to the North Ogden Parks and Trail Committee of $750 to buy the coins, and then they'll use that to self-fund future orders of coins as well. Any further discussion?
We gonna get any interest on this loan, or just a gimme-type thing?
No.
To you.
I'm a banker, but I-
I know you are.
Change the motion.
It's a gimme.
See, they're gonna collect $15 for a $7.50.
And you can roll it over only up to four times.
And you can roll it over only up to four times.
Uh, yes, I understand.
What it does to get people interested and excited to come to North Ogden.
Well, if it'll, it'll give, get people out of their houses, I guess I'm okay with that.
So I'd like to be the first to vote.
Okay, let's start the voting with Councilman Sathwaite.
Yes.
Councilman Yuri.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes.
Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stoker.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then that passes and that's unusual, Mark. Usually, you know, things have to come back a couple of times, so you did good.
Actually, what I'd like to do, I'd like to come back and report on our event and bring pictures and things like that.
Okay, and maybe the design too, once you got the final proof and everything, maybe send that and we'll.
We'd like you to do that too, Mark.
I'd like you to take Jim and his grandkids out on a simple geocash so they can experience it. It's a blast.
Councilman Yuri, if you would be so kind as to send me your email, uh, send me your, find out how I can get you. There it is on the city website. I'll arrange and find out where there's one close to your house and we'll go out and find it together.
Just come, just come hide about a, a dozen of those in my yard. And then, uh, when the pit pits open up there, have people come over to, to find them and do a little yard work.
And I'll provide you a four-wheel drive wheelchair that you can use.
That won't, that won't be good enough.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We'll move on to item number five, which is discussion or asking to consider a request from Green Acres Elementary and PTA. We have Green Acres parents here tonight and Principal Lisa Gilstrap would like to welcome them. And we're gonna have a discussion council about some items that, uh, myself and the PTA and Officer Rhodes discussed a couple of weeks ago. About safety at Green Acres. So welcome first. Brett, do you wanna take the lead, introduce who you've got here? Brett Holmes here from, uh, Green Acres, uh, PTA.
Um, I'm Brett Holmes. I am currently the, uh, community council chairman for Green Acres Elementary School. One of our major functions at Green Acres, not only test scores and raising the ability of test scores, it's also safety of our children. Um, and so what we have found is that one of the concerns we had had, we've had a couple of concerns, but we have one actual proposal for the council here. Our proposal first would be that, um, I'm sorry, the officer's name again was.
Paul Rhodes.
Paul Rhodes. He came to our community council meeting and he, he had, in April, had spent, uh, a morning, uh, before school, about forty-five minutes. Seeing the intersection of seventeen hundred north and seven hundred east and counted twenty kids at that crosswalk going across. There is no ability to see a lot of the crosswork other than just a sign hanging. So what we are asking for is a fifty-fifty split. The estimate of a solar, um, lighting system there at that intersection would be about seventy-five hundred dollars. And we are able to come up with a fifty-fifty split of that if the council so approves. Do we have questions on that one?
Counsel, well, we may have some. I'll go through the whole list too after you're done Brett and then we'll get questions. So maybe continue with whatever else you'd like to mention and then we'll talk about the whole project list as well.
You want the rest of the project?
So.
You're doing great, she says.
Yeah. Um, a couple of other items we have is, uh, a yell, uh, possibility of a path between eight hundred and fifty east cul-de-sac to twenty, twenty, twenty-five north. Um, it'll give us a, a better access for our students to get to school.
Well, you say a path, is that a, a, not a sidewalk?
Are you talking about it?
A path behind asphalt?
It would probably be a trail.
Like a trail, okay.
Kind of path.
All right.
Cause yeah, it's between houses, not exactly like a sidewalk.
Um, a trail at six fifty east going north from eighteen fifty north to Green Acres. Needs to be plowed and kept open during the winter time. Students are crawling through. Um, the, the, the PTA and the, and the parents there at the school thought that, uh, the city owned the trail. We are not really sure who did. Uh, Mayor Taylor was gonna check into that one.
Where's it at?
It's just basically right at the south side of Green Acres at six twenty-five east. There's a trail that runs through. John's pulling it up. Little sidewalk.
Been on that a little more.
That's not that newer subdivision though.
No.
Okay.
No.
So that's the, that's the trail there.
Okay, thank you.
That goes between those two houses.
Right, correct.
Yeah, Green Acres, Green Acres, uh, staff there at the facility is pretty good about being able to, to plow and get clear. Except that there's posts at the end, their plow can only go so far. So somewhere, either a residential has to go out and finish the rest of that on that side or, um, the city would have to go in and do that. That was just kinda the concern they had.
So, so it's like the ballards to keep four-wheelers and stuff going?
Okay, yep. It's the ballards that stop them.
So how much, how, how big a space is that?
About twice of me, I think.
What?
About twice of me.
So like twelve inches?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have a clue on the size.
It's about. It's, I thought it was wider than that.
There it is, right there. Go back just a little bit and go in and there's the baller. See the white ones right in the center?
Can I make a suggestion on that one too, Mr. Holmes? My suggestion would be that you, that you get a couple of shovels for the, and, and have some older students have a responsibility to shovel that.
I, I would be more than happy to do that.
Hurt them at all.
But my question would be, as always, um, once you do those kinda things, there's school district policies that you have to follow and I'm not sure what that would be in this case. Um, asking a student to do physical labor may or may not be conducive to what the school district would like at this point. Let's go with that one.
Councilman Swanson?
My wife teaches at Bates and she just had her entire fifth grade walk on the canal trail picking weeds and trash. And Dr. Stevens didn't have a problem with it. So I don't think he'll have a problem with them shoveling a little bit of snow either.
We can be more than happy to ask that question. Um, uh, let's see, asphalt trail or sidewalk on single property on Monroe Boulevard corridor. This would give a complete sidewalk on seventeen hundred north. One of the major concerns we have there is with the new dairy, uh, community going in. They're gonna go to Green Acres Elementary. There's no real safe direction. Um, my understanding is that they're gonna put some kinda crosswork there at seventeen hundred north. But how do they get from there up to seven hundred east to make the turn to go into Green Acres? Right now, the road is not side, not paved all the way across. Um, a thorough fair, fair issue is my understanding in some of the houses. Um, I know that once we get some information on who actually owns those properties, that Green Acres can work towards, um, trying to get an easement. I'm sure that's the term.
Yeah, and there's only actually one property in this case that would be need to complete, complete it. So it's not that big of a piece. Councilman Turner?
So, um, the safe so, safe sidewalk program that, um, North Ogden we used to do. Um, I, I remember there were some provisions for, cause I think that was through UDOT or somebody, wasn't it? Or, or was it from the school district or how that worked?
The city did some and then UDOT has a similar program as well.
So, but I, I know we had to have three houses agree to have the sidewalk put through. And, and if you didn't, if one of them said no, then, then it wasn't funded or something like that. That's the way I understood it and that, I don't know where that, that was years ago, you know? So I don't know if that's, if we still have a similar program or if we could use a program like that for this.
Or we're, we're researching now if we already have the right of way or if it would be needed to get right of way from the property owner. For example, it ended up that the trail on twenty-five fifty was already in the public right of way. So we didn't necessarily need approval. We did meet with the owners still, but, so that's what we're researching. We're not quite done on.
Okay.
So I, I don't have the exact answer on that one tonight. Councilman Yuri?
I, you know, I'm a numbers guy, if you didn't have, never noticed that. Uh, I'd like to have us come back with some numbers before we even vote on this. I wouldn't wanna vote on it tonight. But, uh, and, and I don't wanna treat you any better than we treated Majestic Elementary. And Majestic Elementary was that we went a fifty-fifty split and, uh, they had to raise our money before we put our money in.
We have the money.
For everything?
For the fifty-fifty split, we do have.
The one we're specifically asking about is the light tonight, yeah.
The only one we're asking at this point is the li, solar lights at the intersection of seventeen hundred north and seven hundred east. The rest of that is things, concerns that we wanna bring to the council. Um, I'm not sure that we have any answers for any of that at this point. So our only suggestion at this, um, fifty-fifty split would be the one solar light connection at seventeen hundred north and seven hundred east.
Councilman Turner?
I, I, I personally am all, I'm all for those solar crosswalk things. I'm, I'm, I'm all for that. I'd, I'd, I'd vote in favor of that. Um, the, uh, I think they're needed elsewhere and not just for the kids. But I, I like the one on ten fifty. They put on ten fifty across trails. I think that one's, that was much needed. So I mean, I'm, I'm all for that. And the other ones, I, 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 yeah, it'd be nice to make sure we, the funding and stuff. But I, I'd be all for the, the solar panels now.
And I think that, uh, most of these solar panels we've had, uh, we've taken, we've paid the whole amount. And so if these guys are willing to go fifty-fifty, I think.
The one, at the Montessori school was a similar situation. Montessori school paid half, the city paid half. So that was the model there. The one at ten fifty, that's for the trail, the city paid the whole thing. The one out here in front of the library, the city paid the whole thing.
Not the one thirty-one hundred at?
The city paid as well. So the ones at the schools, we've tried to get up when the requests have come in with a fifty-fifty partnership.
And if you notice, they've tried to put flags up. So they've tried every resource possible before we've come to this decision. Um, they've, they've tried the flags, they've tried everything you can do. And I, I drive that road and it scares me watching coming the other direction unfortunately, cause I go that way to work. And I see the other people and I think, you, you guys understand that's a crosswalk, right? It has helped with the, I, I don't know what they're called, the, the striping they did. So you kinda know that it's coming. It slowed some people down, but you know, the flashing lights seems to, I think it's gonna be the best help in that area, especially at nighttime or early morning.
So, um, you'd mentioned the price was seventy-five hundred or something like, does that sound, Dave? Yeah, I mean, cause it seems like, we did one, we did a couple down in, in Salt Lake and I wanna say they're closer to ten thousand dollars. Um, now I know they have different models. Heck, yeah, we put our markup on it. Um, so I didn't know if that's, is that, does it fit the model that you would, that we, this, okay.
And actually Chief Warren's been researching and has found another one that's possibly less expensive, about a thousand dollars less, but similar. So it, it's possible it may be a little less than that amount. That's something we'll finalize with Chief Warren making a final selection, determination. Councilman Turner?
So I'd move that we approve the, uh, solar crosswalk at the, uh, agreed fifty-fifty. Rate that we talked about.
To a certain amount.
Yeah, the numbers are gonna be half of seventy-five hundred. Yeah, a certain amount of seventy-five.
Up to seventy-five hundred, knowing that it's likely it may come in less than that. Certainly not over that.
Correct.
Because the latest quote from a different manufacturer is, is actually less.
So thirty-seven fifty would be our.
Right, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the installation of a pedestrian activated light at seventeen hundred north. And Monroe Boulevard slash seven hundred east. And the cost will be shared between Green Acres School or PTA or Community Council. I know, uh, different groups may be involved and the city fifty-fifty up to seventy-five hundred dollars total. So, and then these other items that Mr. Holmes has been mentioning, I'm hoping to bring back as soon possibly as next week. Some more discussion on the trail, once we have the right of way nailed down. And some estimates of what would be for that asphalt on seventeen hundred north. Or what would be to complete the sidewalk on twenty-one hundred north. It's a possible safe sidewalk project under UDOT's program, which requires a minimum of six and a half percent match. Which, I don't have the number tonight, so of course we're not asking for your approval. But we wanted to get you aware of these other projects as well. Uh, John, if you can just pull the list up. That's why we wanted to mention them all, even though only one is ready right now to move forward. So the others, we're expecting to possibly bring one or more of them back very soon. Once we finalize some research we're doing on the cost estimates. So is there anything else Brett, you wanted to say on any of the projects or?
Not that I know of.
Just that our school community would be willing to do the legwork, to, if we have to talk to neighbors about getting easements or, you know, help raise our, our part of the money.
Okay, thank you, Principal Gilstrap. So the school will help with, uh, obtaining easements if we end up doing one of the sidewalks or trail projects that's been mentioned as well. Okay, thank you then Brett. Is there any further discussion council on the motion? Councilman Yuri?
Not on the motion. I, I, I'd, I'd comment after we do this, so.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
So then summary again, this motion is to approve the city to participate fifty percent in the installation of this pedestrian activated light on seventeen hundred north. We'll start the voting with Councilman Yuri.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stoker?
Yes.
Councilman Sathwaite?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then that passes and we'll get right with you. Okay, the parents are very happy with you council, so, and we'll get right together working on that with the new quote from Chief Warren. We'll be in touch with you principal, Mr. Holmes. And then council will be bringing some more details on possible other projects. This was just a heads up tonight. So Councilman Yuri and then Councilman Turner.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, when, when we talked about things with, uh, Majestic and, and maybe we beat a dead horse. But I still think that we, that Weber County School District has some responsibility and I still think we ought to ask them for some funds also.
Okay, Councilman Turner?
So, um, Dave, maybe you can answer, I don't know, a timeframe on, on ordering these. I know that the ones we ordered in Salt Lake, I don't know where we got them from. I can't remember, but it, it took about six weeks to get them there. So is that?
It'll be after the school year starts, but we'll have them.
Yeah, I mean by the, by summer school.
Yeah, definitely before the new year and our employees will install them as we did at Montessori. Uh, we just put those in. So the cost is just the cost of the unit. And then our employees are able to install them. It only takes a few hours.
Do we take that out of Dave's, uh, budget? Is that where that comes from?
Remember that in a second.
We, we do, we will maintain them after we put them up. So if we, if there's another option, uh, you know, I think Dave and appropriate people need to look at that and make sure. That it's something we feel like we can maintain, it's not gonna cost us.
Yeah, and that, Dave and the chief will review this new estimate to see if it's similar quality or, you know, to, to make sure. Cause good point, we don't wanna save a thousand dollars and then it, it lasts a, a lot shorter period of time. So Chief and Dave will review that and that's why it's up to the seventy-five. If this new one is, looks good, then we'll do the, the lower cost one, but it'll depend on the quality. And then the others, council, just take a look at those projects. I, I hope we'll have something possibly to bring back next week because the UDOT program is, you know, there's a timeline. We, we need to respond on that if we wanna try and come in under the safe sidewalks program. However, if we're just doing an asphalt trail, that would just be something the city would do. So we'll have more details shortly for you on the other possible projects.
Can you send us an email with these, uh, coordinates that he gave us so we can drive by and look at them?
Yes, uh, the, I sent you last night, the document, uh, that John has pulled up here. So if you haven't seen it, it was like at one AM. So just pull that up in your email, but it has all the five possible projects, uh, locations. Okay, anything else on this item? Okay, thank you. We appreciate Green Acres' parents and administrators being here to support this. And all the great work that's going there, the awesome robotics team this year. So we're very proud of our Green Acres students. Thank you. Okay, so up next, our Public Works Director, Dave Espinoza is here in the hot seat. Was asking council to consider a request to fund a remodel of the Public Works Administration Building. As, as you know, council, we had always intended the Public Works Building would have the capacity to add some new offices down the road. We didn't know it would be so soon, but the need has arisen and Dave's put together what I think is a good proposal about how to, how to move forward here. So Dave, welcome. Please, uh, let's go through your presentation.
Yeah, so council, I'm just here to ask, uh, we wanted to put three new offices in the main foyer area. It's on the, on the west side of our building, administration building there, um, in the big open area. So with the way that, like mayor said, um, they've kind of always planned for this. So everything kinda lines up already. There will be, um, only one ducting that we have to move and two lights is all. As far as, as far as the stuff that's already there. Um, besides that. Besides that, everything else will be done in-house from our guys, with the exception of electricity, just to be safe and carpet. Um, everything, the framing, drywall, um, all the rest of it will be done. Painting obviously will be done with our guys. Um, the need for this is that, just like the mayor said, we've, you know, we've grown faster than we expected with, with moving in some positions that we never expected either, you know? We didn't plan on bringing, when we were building the building, we didn't plan on bringing the, you know, the, the inspector over. And then we got a few new positions and we also have now brought over, uh, you know, the, in the the budget this year, we're going to bring over the ins, the engineer and that's kind of driven by me. So that's why it didn't get brought up in the, in the budget year that we're in, right? You know, that, in all the budget meetings that we were talking about, because the whole plan was, I think, to bring that engineer over into this office and, and I've, I've made a real push in, into bringing it over to my office just because that engineer, you know, with Matt right now, we work so closely with, you know, he works so closely with Jason and, and Trent and Dave Smith and Justin that, you know, I, I made a real big push to get that position to get moved over there. So that's kind of why we didn't bring it up in the, the buzz, in the budget discussions as much until we knew that we were getting that engineer and now I kind of pushed to get that engineer over there. Now we don't have a space for him. Um, I think it's very important that our engineer, Justin, our inspector, Brian that does solid waste, that they actually have their own offices. So right now, Brian and Justin are in cubicles. Um, Justin has somebody probably from two to ten people a week come in, meet with them, you know, anywhere from contractors to somebody trying to build a subdivision, you know, asking questions and, and it's, it's hard to have Justin meeting them in there and, you know, in his cubicle because there's other things going on in the building. So then we're having to, you know, hope that nobody's in the conference room and and so I just feel like that position, you know, definitely needs one. And the same way with, with, uh, with Brian right now. Brian's moved into where he's helping with the beautification stuff. And so he's, you know, he's meeting with, you know, uh, business owners out here, you know, trying to figure out if we're going to do, you know, planners or, and so those things, they're already, you know, trying to meet in cubicles and it's already a hassle. And, and I feel like our engineer is just going to be running into the same thing if we put a third cubicle in that area. So, uh, what we'd found is if we put him in that, on that, on the south side of that building there, like I said, we can do all the work ourselves at about four thousand dollars in office. So twelve thousand dollars total, so.
So I just had a couple of questions on, or comments on it. Uh, I'm not against it. But I really strongly believe that when we, when we're thinking about these ideas, then we ought to have them in the budget discussions.
Okay. And, and like I said, that was kind of driven by that because I, we didn't know for sure that the engineer was coming in. Then it was my push at the very end.
But that should be part of our, our discussion. We should look ahead and say, if we get that engineer, this is what we would like to do.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the other thing is in your letter, and I think, and I talked to Evan today and, uh, you know, in your memo to us, it said we were going to use funds that we weren't using for the, uh, remodeling of the restroom because we were delaying that. Those funds have already been promised to the, to the, uh, amphitheater. So we can't spend them twice. So, so either you're borrowing those funds from, from out those amphitheater funds with the idea that you're paying back. Or?
And we are, and we're going to pay them back. We want to pay them back this year, but what, what we wanted to do is say, hey, will you guys approve us doing the twelve thousand? We'll go, we'll put it as part of that project. And then we'll come back right at the end of June and we'll reallocate it so that the utility fee or funds pay that back with the exact cost of what I spent. And so if I save a thousand or two thousand dollars, you know, that, that we're now paying back the exact cost. And so it's.
So will you pay that back? So Tiffany has it in her budget for the amphitheater right away? You won't take a couple of years to pay that back, will you?
No.
It's available in this year's utility budget, but we felt it was easiest to do the, when we're going to do the end of year adjustments in June, do that back, but allow them to start the work now by basically loaning the money from the capital project fund.
And we believe that we can get this done by the end of June so that it's done by the fiscal year, so that we can have it in time for the engineer to be moved in and, and the other two guys to move over too. So that was kind of the, the driving forces. Hey, let's use that money. We'll be able to pay it back already this year with those utility funds and.
So you're going to do the work yourself, your guys?
Mm-hmm.
So you're going to be doing the skate park?
Yep.
And that? When are you going to have?
Volleyball course.
Yeah, when are you going to have time to do your regular work?
No, we, we, we've got two different sets of guys doing those things, but.
They'll be snow plowing tonight.
That's why it's, this is good that it's not snowplow time. Councilman Turner?
So, um, will we have to have a, since we're amending the budget, are we going to have to have a public hearing and all that stuff?
We will need to in June.
And so that's why we wanted to bring it as part of that money so that we didn't have to amend the budget twice. So we didn't have to do it right now and then we have to do it late June, right? Is that basically the reason? And we wanted to put it in the capital projects because that's where the rest of our building is. So we felt.
And maybe let's have Evan, our finance director, Evan Nelson, come up and answer that question as well, uh, about, you know, why this proposed way to, to do it.
Okay, I just had three main points that I thought would be helpful. And the first is what Dave just said. The original building was purchased in the capital projects fund. So a remodel to the building should be done in that same fund. But it makes sense that the utility funds would contribute to that. So in order, in order for them to contribute, we do have to open the budget, have a public hearing and do amendments. Um, so, but to streamline that, we do that anyway in June at the end of the fiscal year. So we're proposing to get your approval for the project in the capital projects fund. Um, and then at the end of the fiscal year, you know, in three or four weeks, we'll come back and have a public hearing and propose the transfers from utility funds into the capital projects fund. So that was what we envisioned. Does that answer your question?
Evan, what, what happens if when we have a public hearing, people showed up in force? And it won't happen, I don't think, but what, what would happen if the way you're proposing it, people showed up in force and we don't want to do that?
Um, then I guess it would end up coming out of capital projects fund balance. If, if the council said, nope, we don't want to approve a transfer in, then it would end up coming out of the capital projects fund. We don't anticipate that.
No, I don't either, but I think that, that we need to think about that, that if there were a situation that would, would arise that we'd have this room full and say, we don't want you doing that. You know, we think that public works building is what it needs to be. And we need to look at those things.
Sure. And you know, if the council's not comfortable approving the project until we have the public hearing, you're free to do that too. Um, Dave felt anxious enough about it that he felt like he'd like to complete it in the current fiscal year. So it's figuring out, you know, what you're comfortable with.
I'm okay with it. I'll make a motion and we do it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this plan to move forward with the remodel of the public works building and then bring a budget amendment next month for this item. Councilman Turner?
Do we need to clarify in the motion, twelve thousand dollars or less or anything like that?
Yeah.
I mean.
That'd probably be good. Is that acceptable to you, councilman? A limit of twelve thousand dollars budget for this project? Councilman Swanson concur second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, amended motion and a second to approve a budget of up to twelve thousand dollars for this remodel project as described previously. Is there any further discussion? We'll start the vote with Councilman Yuri?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stoker?
Yes.
Councilman Sathethway?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, uh, if you don't pay that back in time, I'm going to sue you.
Okay. So that, um, is approved then five to zero and we'll move on to item number seven. Council, which is discussion and or action to consider a resolution amending the consolidated fee schedule. Invite Evan, our finance director, back up to discuss this, uh, the proposed changes with us.
Filling off center, hold on. Okay, so each year, uh, we look at the fee schedule and evaluate our fees. And we come to you and propose changes to the fee schedule. Uh, sometimes it's more than one time per year, uh, which has been the case during the past fiscal year. Uh, we, we will be reviewing more fees in June, but we were anxious to change some of the parks and recreation fees sooner because the aquatic center will be opening shortly. And we wanted to get those changes approved if possible, uh, prior to that occurring. Um, so you've, hopefully you've had a chance to look through the red line copy of the fee schedule. A lot of these changes are, are cleanup, simplification, consolidation. Uh, some of them are new fees, so we'll just kind of walk through, um, everything in red and make sure it's clear to you what we're proposing. Uh, starting on page four, uh, we're just adding the word Bowery, Bowery Reservation, so that that's clear what the reservation is referring to. Uh, turning over to page five. Um, field reservation is ten dollars per hour. Nothing's changing there. Field preparation fee is available Monday through Saturday. Nothing, nothing is changing there other than just cleanup. Um, staffing is a new fee that wasn't in the schedule before, ten dollars per hour. Um, I forgot to mention Tiffany's here as well. If you have technical questions about any of these, she's happy to chime in and help us.
Tiffany, does that mean we're going to have somebody there every time somebody reserves a field or what?
We need to, I feel like we need to.
So they don't pay that fee if we don't need to have somebody there?
And is ten dollars, can we cover somebody with that?
I wonder if, well, maybe it doesn't make any difference, but I wonder if, if, uh, after staffing, uh, we ought to put in parentheses, uh, when, when needed or something in there. Does that hurt it?
Yeah, what, what is the condition that somebody would require staffing?
They request it. So for like scoreboards, we run those. If they ask, they reserve the field, the ball field, and then they want us to come run the scoreboards. We would charge for staffing.
So are there some words? I mean, Jim suggested some additional words there. What would you?
I think when needed is great.
Just one other clarification, ten dollars an hour staffing, how many people does that include?
One.
Maybe we ought to say per person or something like that, ten dollars an hour. I mean, in case they needed more than one person there, you know what I mean? Just a thought.
Staffing per person when needed.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yep.
Okay, so keep that in mind when it comes, if you pass this tonight to include that language.
So can we, can we redline that in there now, John?
So right here?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
When needed, is that the?
Per, per person.
For employee when needed.
Per needed, per employee when needed, yeah.
Probably don't want them all capitalized.
When requested.
Requested. How does it feel to have ten people watching every word you type? Yeah, I know. Seeing if you make any mistakes. Like that? Mm-hmm, that one.
We weren't going to say anything.
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, yeah, we were.
It's also hard when you're trying to type like this.
Okay, so is that good Tiffany? You're comfortable with that? Okay. Counsel, that look good? Okay, Evan, let's continue then.
Okay, the next changes, um, are basically just, uh, consolidating the non-resident fee. It's struck from these individual sections, but restated on the next page.
So we're not doing away with the fee? We're just re, putting it somewhere else?
Huh?
We're just making it easier to read.
So.
We will still have the non-resident fee.
So the non-resident fee shows up on page six.
We're making it easier?
It's just all going to be in one place.
Instead of listing it multiple times, we're listing it one time.
I'm messing with you.
Okay.
Oh, I see. We're about middle of the page here.
Right. Non-resident fee for youth baseball, softball, basketball and camps, fifteen dollars.
I, I have a question on that. That, that makes it easier for us to see here, but are people, um, should we put an asterisk by something up there so that people know to look further in the fee schedule? That's covered? I mean, right now it's right there, it's right there where the, uh, and, and where that, uh, individual rates for, for snowshoe rental and we've got fifteen dollars for non-residents. That's still left in there. But I'm just wondering if we ought to have, uh, uh, something that says a.
Or, or move it right up underneath the recreation programs before snowshoe and everything else. Or, oh, I guess camps is included, that's why.
Yeah. I mean, I'd hate to come in and pay the fee thinking and having looked, if I pull up this fee and think I had it all covered and then all of a sudden down further, I didn't look to see there was a non-resident fee.
I don't know that residents typically review this schedule when they're paying fees. I, I think they look at the website or they refer to the recreation office. So I think this is more of a guide for staff when we're administering it. But we're open to suggestions.
Jim, you could rent them snowshoes when you go geocaching.
No, I couldn't because I don't have the money to buy the stone, the, the, the geocoin.
And is this fifteen, the, the language that's crossed out seems to indicate it's fifteen on top of the other fee. The new language, I don't think makes that exactly clear, at least in my reading. Just says fifteen. Maybe we just need to add there.
Additional?
Uh, additional or kind of similar to what it was before, uh, fifteen additional.
Just to the stated.
To, you know, standard fee or something like that, fifteen additional.
Maybe is, is that what it means? I mean, is it, for example, on the snowshoes that were, can it says resident twelve dollars a pair, non-resident fifteen dollars a pair? So that's not any, I mean, that's not fifteen additional. That's just three dollars more a pair.
But for the recreation events, it is fifteen more.
Yeah.
Like a camp or a basketball registration.
So I think just, if we just add fifteen dollars additional even.
So here just put additional?
Do we have forms that they fill out up there at your office when they register for these things?
It's all done electronically.
Pardon me?
It's electronic.
Okay, so are all your people trained that if somebody's a non-resident, that they would pick up that additional fee?
Yes.
If we take it out of here, out of one place, we need to make sure everybody's trained to know that.
So I, I the little tykes and special needs sports camp. At two thirty-five per person?
It's changing from twenty-five to thirty-five.
Oh, I just, I couldn't see that very well. Okay. All right.
Are we, are we okay on the fifteen dollar non-resident fee? Okay. Um, so let's go back to page five. Toward the bottom. We have these refund administration fees. So if, if, uh, players decide not to play and want a refund, they can get a refund minus five dollars. Uh, no refund after the first game. Refund fee for races is ten dollars.
No refund after races? I guess that's obvious.
Didn't run very good.
So, why would we refund the fee? I mean, I can understand if they had a good reason that they, they were sick or something, but just because they didn't show up, I. Cheryl's a runner. Cheryl's a runner, she knows about this.
Before the event.
So before the first game, if they get, wanna get a refund.
Okay, so nobody could, uh, for example, the race, if they don't show up, they, they get their money back?
No, no.
So they have to apply for the refund before they've just, just decided they're not gonna participate in it, okay?
So that's what I just put in there was before event, so they have to apply for the refund before the event.
Put in there, apply, they need to apply for the refund before the event, you know, so they don't think that it's. If you would, John.
Okay, does this page look good now, counsel?
I, I just have one quick question. Where do we play indoor volleyball? We have a fee for it. Nowhere? Is that on next year's capital budget?
That's a budget, a budget surprise, we're about to unveil.
Wondering where it is we're playing.
What are you gonna do with all that money?
Indoor golf volleyball is played, is played in the greenhouse.
It's one of those things that's just ended up somehow and on our fee schedule, and we're not sure how.
It's just one of those deals that Jim wants on there for future reference.
Okay, anything else on page five? Evan, let's take us through page six, please. Okay, on the snowshoes, uh, the fees have stayed the same, but we're just simplifying the language, so if you rent snowshoes at five or more, it's a group rate and you get one dollar off per pair. So that line is added. We took out six lines and replaced those six with one, so that's pretty efficient, I think. Um, little tykes and special needs sports camp, we added special needs sports camp there. And the price is increasing from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars per person.
Two hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah. Uh, we struck the one day craft classes, I guess we don't offer those anymore.
We're, we're, what page are you on now?
We're still on page six. And then the non-resident fee, we talked about that. Now we're to North Shore Aquatic Center, and we've added several fees to this list. Military and family is four dollars and fifty cents per entrance. Swim check, two dollars and fifty cents, that's if the scouts or anybody needs a swim check without staying to swim. Uh, last hour of open swim, three dollars and fifty cents, flick and float, six dollars, flick and float, if you have a season pass, it's three dollars.
Question, on the military and family, we're giving them a dollar break? North Ogden resident and active military, would it kill us to make that a bigger break?
Why can't we just do all mil- veterans?
What's that?
I don't know why we couldn't do veterans, but, I don't know.
I mean, I, I have a soft spot for our active military.
Except for the mayor.
Except the mayor.
Which I did not propose this, just to be clear.
So what are you, you proposing us three fifty?
Yeah, I'd be okay with three fifty. I mean, in a perfect world, I'd say free.
Is that a, are you, are you talking about, see, 'cause we're talking about military and family, and we have four years and up, North Ogden resident, five fifty, so anybody four years and under is free for them anyway, right?
Right, three and under is free.
Three and under is free.
But any, any military member and family member that would be four years and up would be three fifty.
I think that's very generous and goo- and nice, and would be well received.
That would be my proposal, that we change it to three fifty.
I'd like it to be low enough they talk about it and they'd say, at North Ogden.
Well, I didn't think we'd be swamped with, you know, with Hill Air Force Base, all the Hill members, but, I mean, you have to be a North Ogden resident. I mean, as I mentioned a minute ago, for me, I'm okay with free. Uh, I mean, I think the sacrifice that they make is huge. And if we, we don't have that many family members of, of military guys and gals in North Ogden, I don't think there's gonna be a big financial hit, and we just tell them, you know what, this is North Ogden's thank you for your service, bring your family, swim for free.
What's the ma- what's the mayor's response, being in the?
As a military member, I would say, I love it, that's awesome. Well, I went to, recently to a conference in New York City. And we went to the Enterprise, uh, like aircraft carrier museum, it was forty-five dollars a person, military was free. So the gentleman I was with from Ogden City Council had to pay, and I, I got in free, it was fantastic. Then the nine eleven memorial museum was the same, free for military. So I, I love it as a military member, as a financial perspective from the city, it gives me a little concern if it would, you know, be a lot, I, I don't know how much it would be, and once we start it, I don't think we'd ever wanna take it away, so you know, I don't know where the balance is, that's just two perspectives I'm giving you, Councilman Turner?
I just, the other perspective too is, uh, another idea is if they, they're able to come in there free, they're gonna buy vittles for their families, and they're gonna spend money in concessions.
Buy what?
Vittles. Grub, food.
Forty word.
Councilman Swanson?
Um, I, I, I look at it like this, as a, as a city council member, I get in for free with my family. And I don't make half, a tenth of the sacrifice that our military members do. And i- if, if it's, I mean, if it's okay for me and my family to come in for free, and all I do is show up on Tuesday nights in occasional, you know, ribbon cuttings and things like that, I, I think those that are putting their life on the line out there for our country's freedom oughta be able to get in for free, that's just my feeling.
I, I, I would like to hear, Tiffany, you have anything you wanna add or not?
My only, my only hesitation is that military and family, when there is a charge with it, they come, they bring their sons, daughters, you know, we really try not to use the word family, because it's very hard to define.
Right.
So, do you want them to bring sons, daughters, grandmas, grandfathers, how do I draw that family line? And that's my only.
I, I would say husband, wife, children.
You say military and immediate family.
What we get, and the reason we went away from this with season passes is because they'll say, well, my grandma lives with us, she's our family.
Yeah.
Or this is my stepdaughter that lives with us, but it's only every other weekend.
Well.
In order to not do that with season passes, you do everything on an individual basis.
So, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, I recently was my, my son-in-law's, uh, disabled veteran and his, uh, and I was with my daughter, and, uh, actually, we were up at Bear Lake, you know, then one of those drive-ins buying hamburgers for everybody. And so my daughter walks up, I'm paying for the whole thing, she walks up and said, you give a military discount. So here, all the, all the grandkids and grandma, grandpa get the military discount. And, and she and two of her kids are really the only ones that should have qualified for it.
Councilman Swanson?
I, I think we can limit that by just saying it's, it's the military member, spouse, and children. Uh, grandma isn't a spouse or a child, uncle isn't a spouse or a child, living with him or not.
Well, but here's the thing, Phil, you got, you, when, when my daughter asks for these discounts, they ask for an ID, and one ID qualifies for anybody that's with her.
You see that happen a lot, like even with national parks or things, like my brother, um, he has Down syndrome and he has a golden access pass, so if we're ever going with them to a national park, it's whoever's in the vehicle.
Right.
It's often, who's ever on. I don't see a whole lot happening with this, but I do see it being a difficulty for our cashiers. And it almost takes away the niceness of it when you say, oh, well, grandma that lives with you isn't one of your family members, so actually, it's not free, it's six dollars.
But that, but that would apply to the four fifty, or the three fifty, or the two fifty. At, at, at some point in the line, we're going to have to tell them, this applies to husband, wife, and children. And it, and, and the discount doesn't go to grandma, whether it's a dollar, whether it's two dollars, or it's free.
And we will draw blood to see if they're your children.
I, I, I.
Those DNA test, mobile testing will be set up right there.
Councilman Turner?
I, I, I think that we ought to, uh, maybe just word active military and immediate family, and then I'm okay with it being free.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure we want to limit it to the active, because you got some retired people that have made just as good a sacrifice as an active person.
Would you consider maybe it's free for the military member and then a discounted price for any additional family members on their ticket? I see that being less of an issue with including your family.
Yeah, I, I think, I think before we just jump into the free thing, that we oughta let it happen for a year. I don't think we have a very good idea of what will, of what it'll, what'll happen, and how, how it'll get used. And so maybe, I would like to drop it enough so that, so that it's attractive, and they, and they know, you know, they go to North Ogden rather than Clearfield, because.
I, I, I'd like, I'd be okay with dropping it three dollars for a year and see how that, see how many people that really brings in.
And then remember next year, and if, you know, if, uh, it looks like you could drop it to zero, I'd be.
And let me tell you, this is actually on here because it was a fee that we had on our registers that we had been charging, that wasn't on the fee schedule, so I can tell you the use is about two hundred times in a summer, but it's not something we advertise. We don't offer it unless it's asked for, and so if it's something that's free, I see us, you know, advertising that, or, or making it known kind of as a, something else, but it's used about two hundred times a summer, not advertised, just as is.
Now, I, I, you know, I can speak for my daughter, her family being that way, they do not expect it for free, but they do ask for a discount.
And tha- that's why it's there, and that's why we're bringing it to use, because it's been there for a while. We just finally, as I was going through the fee schedule, went and we said, we need to list each and every one of these, and this is one of them, because we do have people call, and they say, you know, do you give a discount for military, and that may base whether they come to our facility or they go to a different facility.
So you're suggesting three dollars, Jim?
I'd go with, that's what you suggested, I'm okay with that.
Let's try it for you and see what happens.
And then.
That's thirty-four thousand, I think that's a little high.
That's only for families named Turner.
Oh, okay.
And do we wanna qualify the term family with immediate, or?
No, 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 they're paying, it's not the same as free, so no, don't make it complicated. Keep it simple.
Okay, there's so much more fun though.
It isn't, you're giving me a headache.
If you don't make it complicated, when I'm off the council, I won't pay senior citizen, I'll just have my daughter come get me in.
You do that.
Uh, do you want it qualified to North Ogden residents?
Well, I don't know, no, no, that's true, no. Keep it simple.
And, and what, how do we, going to the next one, how do we define senior citizens? Fifty-five?
Sweet.
Maybe they oughta.
Might be nice to just put that in.
I think that should be in there to make it clear.
Maybe they oughta get the free swim diaper and plastic pants.
No, that's sixty-five.
So are these fees posted, uh, over at the swimming pool?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, and, and does it say fifty-five and older?
No, actually, just our, our regular admission is there, most people ask for these or we know their age. So we can, we can list them all, but for the sake of our windows, we don't have to really be listed, because we would take up more. In order to see people, it's the resident rate and non-resident.
Is there a place that could be posted on the, outside of the building, what our fees are?
Their cashiers are pretty young, they think everybody's old.
Yeah, and, and they don't dare ask, they don't dare ask either.
That's true, a lot of these, the, the military, the swim check, the senior citizens, a lot of those, even that picnic passes, the non-swimming passes are on a, they request it basis. But yes, we can, outside of study, we just don't post them in our windows, because we have so much in them already, that there's not enough.
Now, you guys think I'm tight-fisted, and I am, but let me, I'll tell you experience with my dad that'll make you know why I am. In St. George with him, we went into Maverick store that, uh, you, you used to be able to go in and fill the Maverick mug for twenty-five cents. So we go in to fill in a Maverick mug for twenty-five cents, and he asked for a senior discount, not twenty-five cents.
It all makes sense now.
And that was in nineteen fifty-five.
Okay, does this look good then, the aquatic center?
Yes.
Okay, let's keep going, Evan? Is that four struck out, John?
Is.
Okay, very good.
So it's three, fifth?
It's three, zero, zero.
Okay, good.
So, we didn't mention the double dip, we just added the timeframe, six to eight PM. And then individual season passes, if they're purchased from October to April, they pay fifty-five dollars instead of sixty-five.
Has that not been in there before?
Clear to me, I thought, I thought we're gonna look, make them pay fifty-five dollars to swim between October and April.
So basically, an early bird rate, if they buy their pass early, they get a lower.
So maybe we oughta put, if purchased by, during.
Okay, so.
Between October.
If.
Cause I had the same thought as, as, I thought we were gonna try and open the pool in April or October.
Maybe individual season pass, early bird, purchase, October to April, something like that.
I did, I thought that would. We're gonna, we're opening up for the mayor and Phil.
Five in January, yeah.
Okay, does that look good then?
Sweet.
Okay, let's go to page seven. Okay, the next item is if somebody purchases thirty or more passes, then they would be three dollars and fifty cents each, so that's a, that's new to the schedule. I guess it's something we've been doing already, though.
Thirty or more punches?
People, so they bring a large group.
So that's thirty or more showing up to swim, not thirty or more buying passes? Well, they'd have to buy passes too, that'd be three dollars and fifty cents each for a pass.
So should we move this up to the daily passes? Cause right now, it's under the season pass section.
I think so.
Yeah, I think that's good too, yeah. Right underneath the individual season pass, that's for fifty-five bucks.
Where, where did you?
On that page.
First we got pist- pic- picnic passes here too.
Mission pass, they're all.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Okay, we struck out the fitness pass slash season, um, just don't do that anymore, is that right? Okay. So that's it for the aquatic center. Uh, the next section with changes is Cherry Day's book advertising, and.
Well, that's a big jump, isn't it?
We, and we talked about this.
We did, these, these have already been approved, and in this version that I included in the packet, they, I didn't have the updated version there, so. So what you're approving in this version is basically the same, the wording is slightly different, but the fees are the same as what you approved in February.
So we're not offering inside back cover in the center page?
Uh, one, one change that Tiffany had proposed that I've overlooked was crossing out the word front on inside front cover, so that that fee would apply to the inside front or back cover. Any questions there? Inside cover, okay, that wasn't in the version you got, but that change is made in this version.
Right.
So either inside cover, front or back, same price. Any questions there? How has it gone with these fees this year?
I think, and we have to do the numbers still for how many we have that are sponsors, um, but I think the revenue will be about the same as it was before, because we increased the fees, we had a few less, um, people participate, but I think a lot of that is also due to, there are a lot of other magazines in this city that you can be in, so I think we did very well, I think so decreasing cost, um, for printing and mailing, I think it will work out very well.
Okay, so that's, that's the end of the proposed changes for tonight. Like I said, we'll come back with other changes in other departments, but we wanted to get these in place sooner than later, before the aquatic center opens, so.
So motion to approve the fee schedule as we've discussed.
Second, you have to have a.
A resolution number?
Number.
Oh, eight, twenty seventeen.
You know what, for future consideration, we don't. You know what? For future consideration, we don't need to do it tonight, but when I'm looking here at these animal things, I think we ought to put a violation in there for not carrying a bag to take the dog's poop away from. I'm serious. I, you know, I have people come in front of my yard all the time and they, and their dogs poop on the yard. They don't ever carry it away. When I go out and walk my dog, I take a bag there to carry that stuff and I think we ought to cite them if we say.
I didn't think you were home, Jim.
I have horses go by my place. What should we do?
Well, they have to wear a diaper.
So there is a fee there for that.
There is? Where?
Well, it's for public nuisance.
Is that, no, that's barking dog.
Public nuisance, there it is.
Where is it?
Public nuisance defecates.
Oh, okay, yeah. Shoot. I'm glad to hear, see that there.
Yeah. Let us know if you see a problem.
Now, if that policeman will just sit right in front of my house every Friday night, he'll get him.
So motion to approve resolution zero eight dash two zero one seven, twenty seventeen.
Female dog, you can't.
As discussed by the council tonight and noted all the changes that are noted there.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, adopting the consolidated fee schedule as amended in the meeting tonight. Is there any further discussion? Start the voting with Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stoker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sathithwait?
Yes.
And Councilman Yuri?
Yes.
Okay, thank you then. That motion passes five to zero.
Bring your kids in and show them off real quick.
Tiffany?
It would be okay.
We said the kids, not the husband. Look at them kids, that's awesome.
I knew those kids had to be here pretty close because I was watching Tiffany sitting there tonight and she's going like this, like she's rocking that kid. She's got that down.
Thank you. Nice to see this daily family. Okay, we'll go on to item eight.
That's what it's all about.
Discussion and or action to consider an ordinance amending personnel policies related to flex savings plan. And Annette Spendlove, our city recorder and human resources director, will be the presenter on this item.
Mayor and council, in our personnel policy, we discuss under benefits, the flex spending account. And that includes medical expenses and childcare expenses. In twenty sixteen, Congress changed the amount in a flex spending account for the health side of it, for the medical side of it. And they, uh, approved up to twenty-six hundred dollars. Right now ours is at twenty-five hundred. And we, um, anyway, as, as we went through this, uh, I also got some information on the new American Healthcare Act Plan that just passed the House in April of twenty seventeen, but has not been voted on by the Senate yet. The amount for a flexible spending account in that repeals the cap on the flex spending account. So if that all goes through and passes, it will repeal that. So with these two things in mind, I'm suggesting that we amend that portion, that chapter, that portion of flex spending to say, um, presently employees can contribute up to the current IRS limit per year to defer qualifying medical costs. So whatever.
It comes out to be.
It, whatever they do, so we're not constantly changing ju- this, just to whatever they allow.
These efficient people.
Yeah, when we have state law and federal law that can supersede, that's the smart way to word it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Can't we do an mayor's executive order or something like that to get out?
I didn't know you would allow me to do those. That sounds like a great idea.
We need a, we need a number.
You, you want the, it changed in the whereas?
I'm not. I know my limits with the city council.
Is it twenty seventeen dash what?
When to push and when not to push.
We just, instead of calling you Mayor Taylor, we'd start calling you the, the Brent.
Councilman Turner?
I want to make a motion.
Okay, here's the ordinance number, but just a second. We have to change one of our whereas's to match this, match what was just presented. The ordinance number is twenty seventeen dash eleven.
So this right here, our whereas used to say up to twenty-six hundred, and now it says up to the current IRS limit, just like it does below.
Hey, I move that we approve ordinance twenty seventeen dash eleven as we discussed about the North Ogden Personnel Policy on the Flex Savings Account.
Second.
As amended or?
Yeah, as amended, yeah.
Second, comfortable with that as amended? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amendments to the personnel policy related to the Flex Savings Account as amended in the meeting, related to the IRS limit language. Is there any further discussion? We'll start the voting with Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stoker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sathithwait?
Yes.
Councilman Yuri?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you then. That motion passes five to zero. We will be in compliance with the IRS, which is always a good thing. That concludes our active agenda items. Counsel, I'd like to ask for a closed meeting to discuss threatened or pending litigation after the comment period.
Okay.
Um, so we'll do first our public comments. Sir, would you like to give some comments? Welcome.
My name's John Springer. I live at twenty fifty-nine North, eight fifty East. And I just wanted to comment on, uh, item number five, the Green Acres Elementary, one of the proposed proposals. I don't know if you can bring that map back up, how hard that would be.
Yeah, John, could we just pull up the, uh, Google Maps? They'd probably be the best. We can zoom in and out. Okay.
And what was your address again, sir?
Twenty fifty-nine North, eight fifty East. I heard twenty-eight fifty-nine North. I was like, so yeah, I heard wrong, so I'm glad you said it again.
You're, you're east of Green Acres School, a ways. You're on seven hundred East, right?
Yes.
Actually right where you were, John.
A bit north. But the map that you had up before, I lived in that, I live in that little yellow circle that was up there. Right here? Yeah. So in the discussion where you can see the, the two cul-de-sacs there, um, although I'm old enough to be a grandfather, I have four-year-old twins and they're gonna be going to Green Acres. And, uh, so, uh, and it shows that I believe that's two thousand North going further east, that's being extended. There's a lot more houses and families in that, and I believe that's the Fernwood subdivision. So there's just a lot of interest in keeping a trail open between those two cul-de-sacs. Not only for the ease of access to Green Acres and the safety, not having to go on twenty-one hundred, but the children from each neighborhood play with each other back and forth. And I, around Halloween time, the trick-or-treating is much better on the west side than it is in the east side. And many of us, I have family that live down in that area, so leaving that open would be awesome. And there's a lot of interest in that Fernwood subdivision for that.
Can we give him a pointer so like, we can tell exactly?
Orient me, where's twenty-one hundred North on this?
Twenty-one hundred is right here.
Okay.
And this is my house right here.
Uh-huh.
So here's the two cul-de-sacs. Currently, there's no, no, this is an open lot, this is an open lot. You can see, construction-wise, they've been driving back and forth here. This is being extended even further up and it looks like there's gonna be a side road here as well. So all these, in fact, this is all filled in. All these houses, all these, this is an open lot. There's three houses here and.
So what sidewalk are you talking about? Or the path?
It's not a sidewalk. It's just a path from, from here. You can see where they're, they've been driving, like I said, the construction. So all the kids that go to Green Acres that are old enough to ride their bikes or go solo, they, they cut through here. My in-laws live down here. We cut through here. Uh, trick-or-treating, we cut through here, but there's also a lot of kids here.
So you're all for the path? You're all for the path?
Yes, yes. Just for the sake of, I mean, this just separates and it's just, it, it's just a separation. It keeps us isolated. Just the flow back and forth with all the families and friends. And if that, if those houses go in, then all the kids have to go up here on twenty-one hundred down, back into Green Acres.
And there's not a sidewalk on a lot of that piece of twenty-one hundred?
No, there is.
So this is something, Mr. Springer, for you to know and council, that our city planner is going to a- approach this. And John, we're not exactly sure where in the stage of development these are and if, you know, if that could be required or not. Or if it could be something we can try and work out with the developers. So it's something we're actively working on right now.
Right.
It is two different projects, so that, you know, just, it, it's a little more complicated because one cul-de-sac is one neighborhood and subdivision, one is another. But that's what we're, we're trying to do and see if something could be done to, to maintain some kind of a connection between those once the, the homes here are completed.
Right. Aside from that, I mean, a, a lot of people come here and they, they, they just take care of the thing that they're interested in at that moment. Right now, this, this big green area here is all new subdivisions going in.
Mm-hmm.
And if it would be possible from a planning standpoint to require a developer, when they put in a subdivision, to make some sort of a connection, um, eight fifty East is, since they put the cul-de-sac through there, it's never gonna go all the way through.
Mm-hmm.
But it just isolates us in our own little pockets. And to be able to have some throughway to go back and forth between neighborhoods would be great.
So council, this is Rob Scott, our planner, this is what he talks about all the time. If you remember, Ward Farms is this area right here, where he was insistent that that road connect to, to, um, Fruitland and that there be two steps put into the properties to the north. And it's for this reason, for circulation, for residents to walk between neighborhoods. So not every island is, or not every neighborhood is its own little island. And it's for things like this that.
Cause otherwise you have a house fifty feet away that literally to walk to, you, you have to go all the way around because they were done at different times, so. So great comments. It is something we are working on, this specific situation, but also in general, the city's trying to be more conscientious than was done in the past.
But as I said, there's just, there's a lot of interest. So when we see this come up on the meetings, we can bring more people in. And one more side note on the North Shore Aquatics, again, I retired from the Air Force, spent twenty-six years in the Air Force. I'm eligible for the senior discount and I have two four-year-olds. And when I show my ID card and they say, um, sorry, sir, this doesn't cover your grandkids. They're not my grandkids. Sure, grandpa. So when you, when you, when you make that statement, immediate family, it's still gonna kind of be on the honor system, cause I tell people, no, they're my kids really. So, but I, and.
And we didn't put the immediate in.
No, you, you, I think you did. I think you did. But so even then, I have to explain.
Discount is, on the military may cover that, but I know that, you know, yeah, um, if you go like Chuckarama or someplace where they have a senior, senior discount, it, it, it doesn't matter. If you get, you and your wife get the senior discount, anybody else with you doesn't get it.
I've taken advantage of it. But, and also as a veteran, I, I would like to see that, to be veterans, not just active duty. But that's just personal, so.
So John, I'm, I'm old enough to be grandpa and I got a five-year-old and eight-year-old, so, you know. And I get, they're my grandkids all the time. I'm like, whatever.
Yeah. And you, you mentioned earlier, this is how democracy works. It's, I just appreciate the opportunity to come up here and address everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. We appreciate you coming. Okay, let's do our council, mayor and staff comments. Dave, let's start with you. Anything?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Dave. Great, great job on everything. Evan?
Uh, just the, the final budget meeting is coming up June thirteenth, so keep that in mind and we're working on the changes that you've asked for. Exciting day.
We're gonna cram it into an evening, aren't we?
Yeah.
Annette? John? Let's start, how about in the middle today, Councilman Yuri, and we'll go down and then come back.
Um, I, I don't know if you're aware, the city probably is aware, but I don't know that, but, um, crossing guard that's over here, uh, Preston Sant. Okay, um, he's my neighbor and, and visiting with him this week. And I don't know if it's a, a problem with the detention basin or, or if it's designed that way, but he said that, uh, certain, he wa- he goes by that, that Green Acres Detention Basin. He said last week there was up to three feet of water standing in the basin. And I thought it was supposed to flow out and come in and flow out. Was it coming in faster than it was flowing out?
Yes, sir. So it's just cold water springs. We, we have.
We want to detain.
Yep.
We want to.
The creek runoff.
Well, I understand that, but, but, uh, boy, at that, at time, he said there was, there were several little kids out there waiting in the, in the water. And he said up to here on them. So do we have any signage there or anything about that kind of thing?
We needed Wadman too, Wadman.
So do we, do, do we need that? Some kind of signage, swim at your own risk or something?
So, um, the, any, any of our basins that hold more than, I think it's four feet of water, they're fenced because of the, the risks associated with that. But anything under that, there's, I mean, we could put signs up. It doesn't, it doesn't give us any more protection or hurt us to not have them. It's just kind of.
In a situation like that, where that borders the, the school, is there a reason to lock the gate between the school and, and?
We do contact the school. When we're backing up like that, we, we definitely let.
Yeah, I, I wonder, is there a way to lock that gate so the kids on recess wouldn't, wouldn't go over there and wade through the water?
It's just a gap, isn't it?
I think it, well.
There isn't a gate to, can, can you really prevent access?
I don't, well, if it's fenced, you can evidently. There's a way it could, or not.
No, it, it'll hit the over.
It's engineered to not be over four feet. Well, that was just a concern, you know, cause he saw little kids out there playing and you don't need four feet of water to drown. So. I just had a question, and Tiffany's gone, but, um, I know that when we have like basketball and that, we pay the school district a certain amount to, uh, to use the North Ogden, uh, schools. And I don't know whether that's for just a custodian there or what, but, uh, I got grandkids that go to that Lowman View Elementary School. And years ago, that addition, that gymnasium addition to Lowman View was funded by people in that area that they had fundraisers and they went ahead and built that thing. And I don't know if they pay for that or not. But I would think that once they built that, it's donated to the school district. I might as well find out and say, if they don't have to pay, then we shouldn't have to pay to use the schools. I'm saying?
So this, this is just my experience with Reeper School District is that all the after-school programs also pay a fee for the, the person to be, the, the custodian to be there. So if it's, if it's not the regular custodial hours, then you have to pay a fee. If you're having a choir concert or a, a play or anything like that, you're, you pay the school district out of that program to, to fund the person to stay around.
Well, the reason I, reason I ask that is because they have little programs over there at that Lowman View School every once in a while for little dance groups and that. And I don't think those, they're paying a fee to use that when they're scheduling. But I think it ought to be, we ought to check into it. And if, if one school doesn't have to, people that use one school don't have to pay a fee, then we shouldn't have to pay a fee in the schools we use either. I think we ought to talk to Reeper School District about that.
Okay, I've got a note here, but we will, and follow up with you.
Okay, and Mary, uh, you and I talked a little bit about Y C C today. If you, you haven't had a chance to talk to her, have you?
Not yet, but I will.
Okay. Then were you gonna mention anything about, uh, Grand Marshal? Are you gonna have a grand thing on that or what are you gonna do?
It will be in the booklet. We have a biography and everything written up and then I'll put it on Facebook as well. All the council members know. Okay, Councilman Swanson?
Uh, Dog Park Slats on the west side. Why did we put him there?
On the west side?
Yes.
We had that discussion last time, didn't we?
No, that was on the.
We put him part of that Comcast Day?
Yeah.
Yeah, why, why did we block off that whole west side?
And I've had somebody ask the same question.
Well, I've had four phone calls from people who.
My understanding was it was neighborhood concerns, but then everyone from the neighborhood has said they loved it. So I, I don't know. Dave, do you, do you have any information?
The, the calls I've received are from the individuals that live directly across the three, right on the corner, uh, Iona Scothern. Um, she's called. She's called me multiple, multiple times, and, sweet little lady, she's just beside herself, because we've taken her view away, and she loves to sit in her front room and watch the people with the dogs.
I'll ask Tiffany to get a little more info, but that was my understanding, was, you know, perception obviously not accurate, that the neighbors, you know, didn't want to see it, so I'll find out information, yeah.
I've received calls from the only three neighbors that can see it from their home, and they are not happy that we put the slats in, so. Yep. And so I would, I would suggest that we.
Yeah, I mean, for my part, I have no strong desire that they be there.
Well, I know you'll lose three votes this fall.
If they're there? Consider it done, I'm just.
No, they, yeah, but I think we would be serving the people that have the most direct view of the park, by at least the first five, six sections of fence closest to the north. You know, remove those, so that Mrs. Skodern and her next-door neighbor to the north can see through and retain that view, and go back to seeing the dogs and the people and the interplay and everything else that she really enjoys watching.
Okay, we'll discuss that.
She would be happy with just the ones at the northmost.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about, the northernmost, like, I walked over there, about five or six of the fence sections. If we pulled the slats out of those, you could leave all the rest, because it doesn't affect her view and her neighbor to the north. But if we took those five, six panels slats down, she could see the dogs and the people again, and not feel claustrophobic, is the word she kept using, makes her feel closed in.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I have, also related to dogs, with the dog licenses, I found my water meter, and I finally remembered to pay my dog license fee.
You didn't get a break on it, did you?
And I did not, not, there wasn't even a hesitation.
Right, I forgot mine last year.
That's right, and I wanted to commend staff for, there wasn't even a, well, you know, and it was just like, sorry, you've got this late fee to pay, and I think that's wonderful, that there is no respecter of persons that way. Here's the fee, here's the late fee, you're behind the date, sorry. Love it.
Plus you passed it.
What's that?
Plus you passed the late fee too. We passed it, so.
Yeah, I was, I was, yeah, I paid a lot for my dog this year. But she's worth it. And then again, just a thank you to staff in general, our department heads, staff, you know, we see you guys out and about in the city, doing what you do during the week, as we drive around, coming to and from, and the work that's going on on the sand volleyball court, looks awesome. Just grateful for the good staff that we have, great people in the city.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Turner.
So I just, I guess, that dog park's in my ward, so I guess make complaints about it being there anyway, so. Not only the slats, I don't hear about the slats, but I hear about parking. Next, this week, I'm having procedure done on my ankle, and so I have post-op on Monday, so I don't know. I think I'll be here Tuesday, I don't, I don't know.
I'm hoping we'll cancel.
I'm all for that, but just so you're aware, and then next Thursday, the twenty-fifth, I believe, is the next Chalk Festival.
So is that putting an ankle tracker on your ankles, a surgery, surgical procedure? For him, it is.
That's pretty funny.
I got a sawzall home, a lot cheaper.
Okay, I'll also be gone next week. Are you going to be gone?
Okay.
So.
We cancel it?
Lynn, Jim, what could we accomplish next week?
What have the three of you been waiting to do?
We have to have a quorum to do anything, don't we?
The three is a quorum.
Just barely have a quorum.
But all of you, all of you would have to agree on everything.
We would only be two.
Well, the mayor pro tem, if there is, can vote then, can't they?
Yeah.
But Carl's going to be gone.
Well, if we weren't spending money, we could probably all three agree on something.
So how many, how many items do we have so far for next week? What's it looking like?
I, you know what, I haven't got anything yet, I need to hold up and look, see if Rob sent me anything.
It's really up to you, council, if you'd like to cancel it, I don't think it would be a big loss.
Let's look at it pretty carefully, if we decide we really have to do it.
I would just soon have everybody here referring to discuss anything that has some weight to it at all.
Yeah, I'll be at the commercial conference meeting with businesses, so, next week. We've got a lot of good appointments set up.
Oh, speaking of which, our residents, it's not as close as they might like, but there's a new Hoppy Lobby going in, down in Riverdale.
Yes.
Man, that Riverdale.
I know.
There's a new Ross's store going on.
Okay, anything else, Councilman Turner? Councilwoman Stoker?
With the dog park too, I had a few calls, and mostly my calls have been on the safety issue about the site. And I probably figure we're within our, what we did with the site triangle on the road, but. But I think if you took those remain, those slots out, that you said it'd make the safety concerns people happy.
That would be a good reason, not a good reason to do it.
Yeah.
It'd make them happier too. And then also, just to say thanks to the Public Works, I'm sure sometimes the staff doesn't like that I run through the city and see things and bring it to your attention, but it was nice, the other day, I was running, and there was a, I heard some water running, and I looked over, and I thought, I don't think that's supposed to be the way it's supposed to be, and it was like their water lid, where your sprinklers, it was blown off, and water was bubbling out like. So they were, went over, Parks and Rec was there, and went and brought it to their attention, and they says, yeah, I don't think that's supposed to be doing that either, so. We really do have good staff, and they're very, you're very easy to work with and congenial, and so the residents do appreciate it, and I do also, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Sathethwaite?
Same kudos for staff, for sure, particularly the salvage dump week, we just finished. Lots of people appreciated, myself included, there's stuff I couldn't lift it, or I would have taken it up there, and a lot of stuff I did, and it just went really smoothly, and I know that it takes extra time, and that Pat lady is, she loves to talk, but she talks about the right things, and she makes sure you're, so kudos to her. An update on the skate park, if we know something.
The design, initial design is underway and moving along. Before the end of this month, we should have that back, and then another meeting scheduled very early June, I would, this kind of rough dates. Phil, do you have anything else?
I haven't seen that we've gotten the geotechnical reports back yet.
Still think they'll be done by January?
Getting those back.
They won't be done by January.
Need the geotechnical to do this design?
They won't be.
Yeah, we should have those Thursday, right?
Do we have to have geocageal reports now, or not?
No.
Only if you're snowshoeing them.
Okay, so council, Annette's looked it up, we don't actually have any items currently for the meeting next week, is that correct? So.
Move that we cancel it.
Okay, if we have a motion to cancel next week's meeting?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So next week's meeting will be canceled, and we'll meet the following week?
Which will be the week before the budget change.
That'd be the fifth.
Start down at parish.
Thirtieth would be the fifth.
Oh, we got, we already scheduled another one.
We'll be all filming.
What is there, but that we can move.
Well, they will, just the very time.
We probably should have one on the thirtieth, if we didn't have one next week, or at least keep it open.
It's the fifth Tuesday?
It is the fifth.
Yeah, I think we should have.
I don't want to, probably have some items we need to do.
Ten and twelve o'clock either, so.
So.
Oh, I'm the one that won't be on the thirtieth, that's the one I won't be here for.
What's that?
I said I won't be here on the thirtieth, I would be here next week, but not the thirtieth.
Well, let's have a meeting, we can figure out something to pass.
Put as many things on it as you can.
Okay, just a couple of quick things, the community cleanup was already mentioned, very well done, got a lot of stuff, I know we took some junk, so. Worked good. The streetlights are very close to getting installed, the new ones, so those will be going up, and the flower baskets, looking very nice. And then the banners too, are getting ordered, so those should all go up by the end of the month, I think it's really going to look nice. There will be the military banners for this time period, and then we'll get some holiday ones and things ordered. The military banners have been fully paid for by fundraising, so no taxes. Chris Barker and the team that she's done has raised the money for those, so that's going to be really nice. I think they have seventeen so far, so not every poll will have one to begin?
They have eighteen.
Eighteen, okay, so the number I'm sure will increase as people see them as well. So we'll have some other just general city banners also, and then, like I say, later this year, we'll change maybe around, you know, November timeframe, can kind of get up some holiday-themed ones, and then over the years, we can just get whatever additional styles we'd like. So those are going to look really nice. The community pond, we'll bring an update to you probably on that last Tuesday, the thirtieth. It's progressing really well, the discussions with Pine View, there's probably going to be a change where fishing's not going to work, and that's just because of the depth that was needed. Bass would work, but not trout, and we felt trout is really what we need for a community pond, that kids can actually catch a fish with, you know, mom or dad or something, so. And it made it difficult for Pine View, if they couldn't drain the whole pond, because there were fish. So we're looking actually now at a design that's going to have a lot of beach area, so it's really a fun, family pond still, just not fish. So we'll have kind of a better update in a couple of weeks, but that's just a little update about kind of where things are going right now. And that's everything I've got, so is there a motion?
Mayor, I saw on your Facebook page, somebody standing by some flowers in a pot, and it appeared to be in a greenhouse. Do we have a secret greenhouse somewhere?
No.
It's a bunker.
They're being bought from a nursery, so, Councilman Swanson?
Just one thing that popped in my mind, as you were talking about those banners, I'd like, I'd like for staff to look into the feasibility of Mother's Day, Father's Day, graduation time, that families, you know, once every three years could purchase a banner, and, you know, high school graduation, first come, first served, if you want to. Some of the high school seniors, congratulations, Johnny boy, and, you know, and have a rotating thing, so that, you know, maybe once every three years or four years on a Mother's Day or a Father's Day, if you wanted to honor your mother or your father with a banner.
Pay for the banner.
You pay for the banner, and we'll put it up for Mother's Day, Father's Day, the week ahead, the week after. And you can only do that every, say, three or four years, so that everybody has an opportunity, but it, I think it'd be a fun way to honor more people in our city, and put those banner posts to work, in addition to the military and the other things that we're doing.
Okay, we'll just, we'll look at that. Okay, anything else? Then, Annette?
I, Joan Brown, do you want to tell them about her husband?
After, yeah. Okay, is there a motion then to enter into a closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation strategies?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into a closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation strategies, is there any further discussion? We'll start the voting with Councilwoman Stoker.
Yes.
Councilman Sathethwaite.
Yes.
Councilman Yuri.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes.
And Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we'll take a very brief recess while we change the tapes.